Good evening. It is February 12th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And we are calling this regular session the Whitestown Town Council to order. Mr. Summer, if you would please do roll call.
Councilman Hancock?
Here.
Councilman Nichols?
Here.
Councilman Patterson?
Here.
Councilman Smock?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
Here.
Thank you very much. Katie, I understand we have some special guests for the pledge tonight.
We do. Please welcome the Boys and Girls Club of Boone County, the Whitestown Division. They're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
If you guys will please come up for it. Thank you so much, ladies. All right. On the agenda, presentations, I see we have one from the Whitestown Economic Improvement Board, the 2024 Annual Report. Todd?
Good evening, Council. Just a few highlights for you from the Economic Improvement Board Annual Report. So this is a requirement that the Board does essentially present their annual report to the council. Included in here is just kind of a summary. They did meet twice last year. And as I guess a reminder for everybody, what is the Economic Improvement Board? It is the Board that kind of covers the Economic Improvement District that was established. It's a voluntary program for those business owners to fund this Board. And the primary function of this Board, right now anyway, is to fund the Whitestown Circulator, or excuse me, the Whitestown Connector that does extend down to Traders Point to pick up folks at kind of that last point of the Indigo Bus Route and then does a circulator system through the industrial areas of town. This Board initially, obviously, when it first got up, did receive some additional funding through the RDC, but has been really self-funding for the last two or three years, been able to cover all of the expenses of that connector. Up until November of last year, we were receiving a grant through SERTA, the Central Indiana Regional Transit Authority, for a portion of that service, really to kind of help get that up and going as well. That did end in November. But the good news is, like I said, the district is really self-funding for that bus service. Through recommendation from SERTA, that we did look at changing service providers the starting of 2025, they did go through that review process. I did participate in that review process as well. They are now going with Go Express as the service provider. Also in there, you'll see ridership numbers, including kind of a five-year history. So essentially, last year was the fifth year of the program and had solid numbers all through last year. Just as a sneak peek into 2025, we did get the January numbers back and it was actually our second-largest January numbers to date. So we're not sure if that's related to the new service provider and things that improvements that they were making. Obviously, we'll kind of continue to monitor that, but that was a good sign. Also included in there is just the general route information and times. So be happy to answer any questions you might have related to their annual report.
Thank you, Todd. I did see that you called out that there had been an uptick in the last quarter of last year of ridership.
Yep.
Nothing crazy, but significantly less uptick. Do you have any insight on trends of ridership? What increases or, you know, what is driving those upticks besides just new businesses?
Well, no, no. We don't have, that's one of the things that we're trying to understand. Why was January so good? How do we, you know, continue that, right? And so, yeah, that's just one of those things that we're studying. So last, so 20, going into 2024, prior to 2024, there was, I think it was a dollar a ride. Essentially, that went to zero dollars in 2024. I would imagine that, you know, assisted in some of that. Now, they do have cost if they're, you know, riding Indigo to Traders Point. They still have those costs, but the connector itself was not an additional cost for them. So we're looking to determine, you know, is it improved service from the new provider? Is it better accounting from the new provider? So a couple of those things that we're just trying to identify.
And do we have any data about origin and destination for riders?
They have some zip code information, but beyond that, no.
Okay.
We do know some of the businesses that are actively, you know, pushing this for their user, for their employees as well. So one other piece in there I forgot to mention is important kind of going forward. There was a change in the state statute last year that enables the boundaries of the district to expand. Prior to that, once you set it, it was kind of locked in. So that's one thing that the Board wants to investigate this year in terms of, because we have had significant growth since this was established in 2019 and properties that are outside of that that could essentially take advantage and then obviously help fund this district as well.
When do you think your first meeting of '25 will be?
So essentially, we have one kind of going forward set for each quarter. So we'll have four meetings this year. And the intent of that is going forward, we'll have, you know, one a quarter.
Thank you, Todd.
All right. Thank you.
Agenda item three, Clerk Treasurer Report. Any questions or concerns about the Clerk Treasurer Report? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item four, Department Reports. Are there any questions or concerns about the Department Reports? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item five, Public Request to Speak. Do we have any online?
No one online.
No, I have one, Public Request to Speak on a non-agenda item here. Ken, did you have something to add? Could you go ahead? Do you have the form at all?
I'll fill it out and give it to you.
Please do.
Yeah. Thank you. My name is Ken Kingsell. I reside at 6515 East 750 South. And I'm just here asking about the status of my public access document request dated January 29, seeking detailed legal invoices.
Town Attorney?
Thank you. We are working on getting that. We responded to you within the seven days as required under the statute. And then the next deadline is within a reasonable time. You've requested invoices for over a year, and there are many different pages that need to be reviewed.
And my assertion that you're advising the town basically constituted a conflict of interest? I haven't heard a response to that.
I don't think we needed to respond to that, but we don't feel as it's a conflict of interest.
Okay. And I kind of wonder why it is that maybe we don't have an in-house attorney on staff as a member or as an employee. We could pay a full-time attorney $150,000 a year with benefits and taxes, et cetera. That might cost us, I don't know, $225 a year. They could handle the day-to-day matters, all the questions from the council, questions from the town manager. They could sit on the boards and commissions. And you could keep outside counsel on retainer for complex issues. So I don't know why we spend what looks like this year going on close to a million dollars, potentially, on outside counsel for all town legal matters when we could have someone on staff at approximately $150,000 a year. So just throwing that out there, I'd like to see maybe some discussion about that at some point. It seems to me it would save the town a heck of a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tom Andrew, Katie Barr?
So I'd like to take this time to introduce our newest team member to Team Whitestown, Jason Forsyth. He's joining us from Frankfurt, Indiana. With his knowledge, his reputation, he was very well-loved in Frankfurt and his leadership skills, we're excited to have him join our team as the Director of DPW. And welcome to Whitestown, Jason.
Just wanted to say thank you to everyone. It's exciting to be here. First three days have been extremely busy. Hopefully, to get my feet underneath me very soon, but thank you all very much. And thanks, Katie, for the kind words. I appreciate it. It's very nice to meet all of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. That leads us to item six, Approval to Consent Agenda.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda containing items as follows. Item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes, January 6, 2025, Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item B, Approval of Meeting Minutes, January 21, 2025, Town Council Special Meeting Minutes. And item C, Claims, January 2025 Expenses Town, January 2025 Revenues Town, and January 2025 Utility Claims.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Come on up.
Again, good evening, Ken Kingsell, 6515 East County Road, 750 South. I have a couple of questions on the claims. First of all, as I review the claims from last month, and I think these questions are for the Clerk Treasurer, I see many entries in the legal invoices as well as in banking invoices that look like, to my untrained eye, to be triple entries. I think there's probably an explanation for them, but there's payments, there's credits, and then there's another payment. And so I just request an explanation of those. And I can point you to specific ones on the report if you'd like.
Which report are you referring to, Mr. Kingsell?
I am looking at on your claims, like the rights, it says rights to municipal utilities. I don't think it is, but it's a... Total amount is $9,415,889. And on page 12, under Huntington National Bank, the first six entries on what I'm referring to. And also in the TAF entries, there's first 10 or 12 entries. So if you're looking at Huntington, is that the first one you're looking at?
What page?
Okay, let's go to page 12.
On the town?
The town claims.
Okay. Okay, I see it. What's your question?
Okay. So on the Huntington National Bank, the first entry is for $260,000. The next entry is a negative $260,000. And then likewise, the next one is $1,546.98, and then a negative of that. It's, and then, and once, once those are in there, then below that, we have another entry of that exact same amount. So I'm just curious.
Yeah, so that was where they were printed incorrectly. So they had to be voided to be re-entered, so.
Were there checks that were printed incorrectly?
Yes, that's correct.
So you have a software system that produces the checks? Or are they done by hand or are they?
They're not done by hand. They are done by software.
By software, yeah. And I see that happened, if you look at the TAF Steptinius and Hollister page, page 21, it happens again. And for every single one of the payments, so it looks like every payment you made to TAF, there appeared to be an error and you had to do it again.
So that's all on one check typically is how it's done. It's multiple invoices, if you will. So for instance, like at the very top of the TAF thing, you see the $23,000, right? The next one, you see $17,000. That's all on one singular check. So because it's multiple different invoices that are combined for one check to go out. So when the checks print incorrectly, all of those get reversed, if you will, in the system. Because we could print the invoices individually if we chose, but it's all coming from one banking account. It's for one large statement. Same with Huntington typically. That Huntington earlier was not. Those were definitely individual payments. But for this instance, when one check gets messed up, they do have to be voided and then reprinted. So you'll see the negatives for every single invoice associated with the check.
So it's interesting, though, that the checks that all got, that had errors, were all to either legal or to banks. There's a US Bank, there's a number, there's three entries like that. And then a Wells Fargo Bank also has three. So I'm just curious why we have so many errors on the report. Is this something, is this, is this something that you check over before it goes out to be on the agenda?
This report?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So on the same, on the same document, we look at under NDOT, in the Department of Transportation. Same issue arrived.
Excuse me, what page?
I'm sorry, it's page 12. The bottom of page 12. The problem with this one is we have the entry and then the negative out. It's $177,597.83 on those two. The next one, which is the correct one, is a different number, $177,594.83. So there's a $3 discrepancy. Where are those $3s, or which one's correct?
I would have to look at the invoice again to know which one's correct. But I believe it's the one that ends with 4 is the correct one. So the amount was in...
Maybe the error, maybe there was an error made in putting the numbers in and then we found that the number was wrong and we corrected.
Correct, yes. Yeah, during the reconciliation process.
Okay. So this document you review before it goes to council on the agenda every month?
Every month.
To make sure there are no errors?
Well, that's simply a register of all checks, voided checks, that were cut during that timeframe.
Okay, this is, this is like on our checkbook. It's our check register.
But yes, effectively, yes.
And when council is approving it, what's the effect of the approval and the consent agenda when they're approving the claims? Are they approving what's on the check register or are they approving something else? That's probably a legal question. I don't know.
I don't understand your question. I'm sorry.
Okay, so tonight, what happened?
It's a pre-approved claim, so this is the record of what was paid.
Okay, so on the consent agenda, when it gets approved by the council, what effect does that have, if any? Maybe transparency?
It's a pre-approved claim, and it's a record being shown to the public on what was spent on the pre-approved claim.
It's required by the state. It's an acknowledgement.
Okay, so it's essentially for transparency?
Yes, and the state requires that we provide this every...
State Word of Accounts.
That is correct, yes.
So I wanted to point out on the other document on tonight's agenda, so there's two claims documents.
Yes.
The other one, I think, is the utilities.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That one has, there's the dental, dental payments. And there appears to be an improper payment of $478.62, which is broken up into two, two entries for $239.31. I'm just curious...
So that's because we have the water fund and the wastewater fund?
Okay.
So those two are separated in that way, so...
Right, but what I'm saying is, why was $478.62 corrected? Out of, it looks like there's $23,000.
Do you have a page number for that?
Yes, I do. Page, page three at the top. There's three double entries, basically. And so the minimum one, $239.31, looks like it was...
Oh, no, that is a credit.
A credit.
That's a credit to those funds.
So that's something you ever paid before?
No, that is a negative because, well, no. So yes and no. What happens is with insurance companies often, you have an employee that leaves, right? By the time the insurance company sometimes finds out that the employee leaves, sometimes at that point, we've already been billed on a cycle, things like that, right? So we'll get credits. And sometimes, depending on how many employees there are in a department, specifically water, wastewater, it's fewer employees than with a town, it can ultimately add up to a credit.
Okay, I understand.
That is a credit.
Okay, thank you. And then I found out, I wanted just to point out that from your January 6 council meeting under the consent agenda for the claims, I went back to look at that one. And there's two links, one to the town expenses and a link to the utility claims. And they both go to the same document. So that was, again, my question earlier, was what's the effect of approving it? Clearly, there is no effect. It's just a show based on state word of accounts. But I would request if we go back, that we go back and post the missing document from the January 6 meeting. Because there's a link there, your usual agenda has two links for claims, one for utility claims and one for town claims. And both links go to the same document. So I just request that we, I'm sorry?
We can get the links updated.
Okay, good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A motion has been made and seconded for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, indicate as aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda is approved, 5-0. Item seven, Unfinished Business. We have no unfinished business. Thank you very much. I apologize, Council. If you will humor me, I have a couple of late entries for Public Request to Speak on non-council agenda, or non-council, non-agenda items. I apologize. Mr. Kevin Russell, if you'd like to come up?
Good evening, Council. Most of you know me. I've been a resident of this town for 18 years. I've lived here for 19.
Kevin, don't forget to give your full introduction.
I'm sorry?
Don't forget you have to give your full introduction, your name and address.
Well, it has to do with my comments, okay? I have been a resident of this town longer than anyone on this council. That includes you showing you've lived here, but you have not been a resident of the town, okay? Recently, there was some social media, there was a podcast put out. And that podcast is from a guy that lives in Lebanon. And he talked about the last local council member. Now, my concern with the way he mentioned that is my property values. If someone thinks that they can come in, and when I say I've been a resident of this town longer than anyone there, that doesn't mean I have more say. The resident that moves in today has as much say as what's going on in this council as someone that has lived here for 18 years or lived in the area longer than that. But he essentially said that the four of you don't count that only show accounts. And yes, that upset me, and a lot of people heard that. The council needs to disallow those kind of comments because it will affect property values. It will most definitely affect property values. If the good old, if someone wanted to move in here and does due diligence, figures that the good old boy network is the only one that's going to be able to say anything here. That in itself is wrong. Now, I want to touch real quickly on a couple other things. First, this to council. Being on the council for 12 years, I was told recently by a council member that you couldn't have more than two members at a parks meeting. That's wrong. Your attorney can tell you. You cannot discuss town business as far as what you're going to be voting on council-wise, but you can be there. So at the parks meeting, all three council members that had people in that area that they were talking about with the park, their ex-property, all three, you could have been there to hear from the residents. Eric, an awful lot of your residents were there for Westwood Landings. And they did not want that park in the woods. They didn't want the woods to be given up. And I'm not sure, you'll have to go back and research because I've slept since then, but we did put in a buffer zone when we approved Westwood Landings. There is an intentional buffer zone of, I believe, 125 feet. That was put in when we approved Westwood Landings when I was on the council, just so that you're aware of that, so you can't get that close anyway to your residents, Eric. But that needs to be kept and enforced, okay? The last thing I want to touch on, I have an agenda item comment I want to do also. I don't know if you want me to do that now or not.
We're going to wait for the agenda item to come up if you have a comment on that.
That's fine. The last thing I want to bring up is, and it's not in front of you yet, but you're going to be looking at a subdivision on 750. 339 homes, I believe, maybe more than that. The issue that's going to be is, and don't get me wrong, I like the plan. I like the subdivision. But the traffic in that area is going to be ridiculous. That subdivision will not be able to go anyplace out but on 750. When you get to 750 and Indianapolis Road and 750 itself, they're going to have to be taken care of before that subdivision becomes active. And that's the council. Going the rest, it's Zionsville. If you can get Zionsville to cooperate in riding 750. So, and some may say, and I like the idea that the plan has mentioned something about Ronald Reagan and has right of way. I've done a lot of research on Ronald Reagan because I bought some investment property there last year. And Ronald Reagan, realistically, will probably be 2028 before it's to 1,000. And there's no plans to take it past that. I've been in contact with the county engineer. My property is just south of 1,000, so I was trying to figure out when my property is going to be adjacent to Ronald Reagan. So using Ronald Reagan, using Ronald Reagan as the buffer for that traffic coming out of the subdivision is not going to work. It's probably going to be 2030 before Ronald Reagan, I would say realistically, before Ronald Reagan is up in that area. So 750 needs to be taken care of. I thank you for your time, Council.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Still need your full name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry?
Still need your full name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kevin, and I did not hear it. I'm hearing impaired. That has to do with, I jumped out of my eye, by the way. Um, my name is Kevin Russell. My full address is 6123 Golden Eagle Drive. Zionsville is the postal address. No, it has nothing to do with town you live in. I'm tired of trying to make that argument with people, so. There's even Brownsburg addresses inside Whitestown. I don't know if you guys realize that. Thank you.
All right. We are now on agenda item eight, new business. Item A, consider expenditure exceeding 25,000 not to exceed 38,200 for the Main Street Trail Extension. Mr. Dominic?
Good evening, counsel. Um, what you have before you is the, um, extension from Main Street Park to Albert S. White on the west side of the road. This is to complete the, um, trail at the new property that we purchased on the corner of Albert S. White and, uh, Main Street. This will provide pedestrian access from the park all the way around to the new library with the, with the hawk signal as well, and it also will help with some of the features that we have announced that will be coming to our Parks Department soon.
Dom, quick question.
Yes, sir.
The, um, the document from Triangle Asphalt has a few different numbers with, with add-ons. Could you tell me what we're actually getting?
Yeah, so what we did was, we went with the original quote and then added on the sod because of the additional features that are coming. There will be, um, the bike share program, which we wanted to go ahead and put inside instead of putting down seed and straw, just because if people go off the trail, then we have a muddy mess. So we went with the original quote plus, I think, the 7,200 to do the sodding along the trail as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding this item?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve expenditure exceeding 25,000 not to exceed 38,200 for the Main Street Trail Extension project.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five zero. Next, item B, consider expenditure exceeding 25,000 not to exceed 1,787,400, $843.62 for construction contract award to Grady Brothers for the 2024-2 CCMG paving project. Hi, Sri.
Good evening. So this is a construction contract under the 2024-2 dash two community crossing ground that we received late last year. Um, so 50% of that 1.78 million is going to be the match from inbound, which is approximately around 899,3122 dollars. So this project will happen this year. There is a list of roads that we're going to be paving this year, which I think I've sent you all, and, uh, some of that last year when we got the grant award. I can, please send that to you if you'd like. So this is just for this year's repaving, paving project.
So, I just have a question, um, because there's a road that's not on here, um, and I don't know if it's just because most of it is not in our town limits, but one that we may want to look at trying to partner with the county is County Road 500 East. The northern half is county and the southern half is what goes right in front of the Coke plant. The road is literally falling apart on the edges, I think because of all the semi-traffic, and that road's not really wide enough. So there's just something to look at going forward, and then 575 south of Albert S. White.
Okay.
Um, the edges, so that, that may just be the matter of fixing the edges.
Okay. Definitely take a look at it for this year's call.
Almost 900,000 grant matching is always a welcome sight.
Half-price roads are good.
Half-price roads. Any other questions regarding this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve expenditure exceeding $25,000 not to exceed 1,787,843.62 for the construction contract awarded to Grady Brothers for the 2024-2 CCMG paving project.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five zero. And it looks like we have something that goes hand in glove with that. Item C, consider expenditure exceeding 25,000 not to exceed 99,108.60 for professional services agreement with BLA Inc. for construction administration and inspection services for 2024-2 CCMG paving project.
Yeah, so this is just to do construction observation testing and inspection to meet the inbound requirements.
Mr. President, since we approved B, I'll make a motion to also approve then the professional services agreement with BLA for the construction admin and inspection services for that project in an amount not to exceed 99,108.60.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries five zero.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Sri. Item D, consider expenditure exceeding 25,000 not to exceed 45,000 for the July 3rd fireworks celebrations. Mr. Dom?
So this year, we saw the three different pyrotechnic companies. Uh, one was Ramsey, which we've used, um, for the last several years. One was, um, Nine Fingers Pyrotech out of Louisville, and, um, third one was Burger House Productions, um, here in the state of Indiana. I learned a lot about fireworks during the, the process of getting these quotes out. Um, different shells do different things. I can promise you a million shells, and they can be less, less enthusiastic as we want them to be, but, um, you see the quotes there before you, but I would like to choose to go with Ramsey Pyro. Um, we've had great shows in the past. We have great relationships with our, um, fire, which who signs off on them, and our police department as well for overnight security and things like that. We know the setup. We know that we can trust that they'll trust the ground. Um, also with Ramsey, we got the $5 million liability insurance policy. With Burger House, who responded, they have a $2 million policy. So, um, I did check with our insurance company, and he told me to proceed probably with the highest, um, liability insurance.
So I'm hearing that the Ramsey is the lowest, most responsive bid?
Absolutely.
Do we have a list that could compare what, kind of apples to apples?
Yeah, so what I, what I did was, I sent them the shell count that we had in 2024 and said, give me a price for this. But they can all tell me they're going to do 2,500, this is just a number. They can all tell me they're doing 2,500 shots, but what are those shots really? So it's really me taking the word that they're going to do 25 shots at this, you know, at this big bang, and they're, they could be smaller ones that fizzle out. Um, so all I did was ask for the shell counts, and that's, that's kind of what I received back for quoting.
Okay, so, so the, the additional insurance may be why the cost is higher?
It could be, and also, there's been a lot of accidents around, um, states during fireworks celebrations. Um, one thing that we do, and we know that they do, is Ramsey checks the ground afterward for shells. Their computer system also tells them if there's shells that did not go off, so if someone mowed the grass the next day, um, yeah, we wouldn't want them to hit it with the lawnmower. So, um, we just had a great relationship with Ramsey throughout. Our fireworks show has been bigger and better, so, um, I did go out and get the three quotes, but I think the most responsible would be to stay with who we've used.
Have we paid this deposit yet?
No, sir. I was waiting to, I got to get it approved by you guys first.
How long have we used Ramsey? Have we always?
I've been here since 2020, and we've used Ramsey. Um, I don't know how many years before that we've used Ramsey.
We have a question for the audience. Come on. Thank you.
So I guess, what I would say is, I would leave it in the hands of the council. If you, if you want to go with the lowest cost, we could, we could do that as well.
I know that the residents, um, as close to universally as possible, have always enjoyed the fireworks shows. It would not be, uh, it would not be remiss if, if for next year, because I know these things have to get planned well ahead, if you were to look at companies and say, hey, this is what we're after. We want this many shells, this level of insurance, and let them quote that so that everybody's quoting the same amount of insurance on it, so that we can have that for, for future considerations. But for this proposal, I will say that I do know that sometimes history with a vendor does go pretty far, especially when you know what you're getting from it. Are there other questions from council?
No, the, the bid law just requires the lowest, most responsive bid, so if your, um, department head is saying that the most responsive bid is the second bid, then that would be a reason why to go with that one. If you, but it's up to you to decide which, which bid to go with.
Dom, is that your belief that, uh, Ramsey is the most responsive per your request?
Uh, per my request, yes, they have been. Um, but again, I'm willing, I don't want the fireworks show to fizzle out on my account, you know? Um, I've seen the shows over the last five years, and, I mean, I'm not, no disrespect to Burger House Productions, but this is what the town has had, and if US council would like to switch, I'm not opposed to it either.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion. One more ask if there is a motion.
I think with a tight timeline, um, I'm going to make a motion to go forward with the Ramsey Pyrotechnics quote for an amount not to exceed $45,000 for the July 3rd fireworks celebrations, uh, though I would like further conversations with Burger House for next year. But motions for this year, and time's tight, so I'm going that route.
I'll second that. We have a motion and second. All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries five zero. Item E, first reading of ordinance 2025 dash three, the 2025 salary matrix.
So what we're doing here with the salary matrix was, there were some errors in the bi-weekly salary amounts. They didn't add up to the overall annual DME. Um, the annual DME did not change. It was accurate. We're just updating the bi-weeklies to match that, and then I believe Chief Westridge also made a change on the salary matrix that he can explain.
So the first half is making sure that the math maths correctly?
Correct.
All right, chief?
Good evening. Uh, so the fire department portion, um, requesting change on the salary matrix is to up the, um, number or quantity of division chiefs. Um, currently, the ordinance states three. Um, we would like to change that to four, and that is simply to allow us to have, um, the new fire marshal come in just for a few weeks, um, to complete a transition with the outgoing fire marshal who's retiring March 7th. With that also, I'd like to, uh, ask for consideration to pass it this evening, um, with the tight timeline we have for that.
Uh, before I take any motions for amending the rules, I'll ask if anyone has any questions regarding the actual update for the ordinance or the, uh, the position. As a reminder, with an ordinance, if we are going to amend the rules, it does have to be unanimous to suspend the rules, uh, or excuse me, suspend the rules for a second read tonight. Therefore, do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
I make the motion that we suspend the rules.
Second. Motion has been made to suspend the rules for, to allow a second reading of the ordinance tonight, and seconded. All in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the rules are suspended. We will now do the second reading of ordinance 2025 dash three for the salary matrix, correcting the, uh, the bi-weekly math and adding the position chief discussed. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we approve ordinance 2025 dash zero C, zero three, the 2025 salary matrix.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five zero. Item F, consider approval of out-of-state travel for planning staff to attend the 2025 Planning Conference. Hi, Todd.
Good evening again. This, uh, request would be for, uh, both, uh, Allen Henderson and, uh, myself, uh, to attend the, uh, 2025 National Planning Conference, uh, to be held in Denver, uh, this year. Uh, attached to those requests is, uh, estimated, uh, travel expenses, uh, for, for each of us on that. This would be, uh, the conference is Saturday, Sunday, uh, Monday, Tuesday, so they attempt to limit, uh, time out of office, so.
Todd, what are you guys going to do with the office until there is only two of you in there?
Yeah, so Shannon, our, uh, executive assistant, will be, uh, present. Uh, we, we currently have a, a job offer out for another, uh, planning administrator. Uh, if they would be, well, uh, Allen and I will both still be connected, uh, to the office, uh, as well. So, uh, we'll, we'll be able to respond, uh, to things that are coming in.
Okay.
Are there any other questions regarding this item? As a reminder, the, uh, the balance as well with the discretionary spending, this is more an approval of the out-of-state travel. So therefore, I would consider a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve out-of-state travel for the planning staff to attend the 2025 Planning Conference.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carries five zero. Thank you very much, Todd. Item G, consider approval of resolution 2025 dash zero one declaring certain personal property to be surplus.
Uh, good evening, council. Uh, what we have in front of you is, um, just essentially our Excel list of everything that we've had built up, uh, since my time being here. Um, it's all old equipment, um, all the way from, there's keys missing on a keyboard because it's old, to screens are cracked, to, um, all that number of things. Uh, Windows 8, it just can't update anymore, all along those lines. And the exhibit essentially monitors through what is MiFi's, um, is everything town-related, and then the second page for me, but it's the Toshiba products through the scanners, that is stuff coming from the, the police department, um, from public safety side of things, I guess I should say, so.
Where does this material then go? Does it go to recycling, or where's it?
Uh, no, so this is all going to go to recycling. This is unusable, unusable equipment again. Um, I've used a couple of companies in the past. The one we look at, um, does a certification of destruction for us. Um, so if we did miss anything, they send us back a, here's your serial number, here's what we destroyed on it, which really benefits us. here's what we destroyed on it, which really benefits us for the paperwork portion of it, especially when it comes from the public safety side. Fire not as much, as more of police, we want to make sure their stuff's actually getting destroyed properly, and that's what we shoot for, so.
Appreciate that.
So I know previous years, we've donated like some laptops to some outreach programs or something, none of this is...
Yeah, completely different ballgame, yeah. So actually, since we started doing that, a lot of those laptops, we actually keep in-house, we use them for one-offs, we just put, when we push the annual trainings for our field guys that don't really have phones, we took those old laptops and put them at the streets departments and things like that, so they have a computer to do trainings on and things like that, compared to trying to do it on a phone. We use a lot of those in-house now. So we don't actually assign them to users, but more of a, here's a common computer so you can get some stuff done if you're a phone user, not a computer user.
Any further questions regarding this? Hearing none, I would consider a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one declaring certain personal property to be surplus.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five zero. Item H, consider expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed forty-five thousand for Microsoft licenses.
So this is by Microsoft licenses, just so you're aware, that is Outlook Word email, all that stuff. The backend of that is the management platforms to which I control, making sure that you can send emails and do all that things. With that, we buy the licenses monthly right now. The opportunity has come up to where we can buy a license per year now instead of monthly. In doing that, they give us a discount for the monthly price to make it to where, essentially where we would buy the hundred and forty-seven licenses, the eighty-one licenses, and then the one-one-two there on your sheet. Instead of spending fifty-four thousand throughout the year, we'll just spend the forty-five thousand, and so on now, saving us about nine thousand dollars for the year. The goal of this is not to eliminate all monthly licensing, but to take a large bulk of all of our licensing and do it one year. And then every year, in the February timeframe, bring this to you again and make that one forty-seven number go to whatever the new user count is. We still want to maintain some of them monthly, because we do have, you know, this person leave or this person comes. If someone comes in and we buy that monthly, or that license right there on the spot yearly, then I then have to worry about that date to make sure that license gets renewed. I don't want to do that, I want to do it one time every year, manage everything monthly, and then add it all up again every year, so.
Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed forty-five thousand forty-two dollars for the Microsoft licenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries five zero. Item I, consider expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed fifty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-two cents and a prepayment amount of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents for audiovisual equipment for town hall.
This room. TVs, microphones, speakers, everything you hear. In front of the scenes, I know you guys have also seen things, you know, glitch out and things like that. Behind the scenes, we see a lot more. We make it through every meeting with, you know, we, we start the day off about four hours before you guys firing the system up, trying to fix kinks right on the spot, and then troubleshooting from there and throughout the entire meeting. I know most of you in the past have brought your complaints individually, like, hey, why did that happen? Yeah, it's the system. We're not doing that on purpose. The goal of that is to clean this up. So the company that we looked into, the, like I said, there are three quotes in front of us, I propose that we go with the cable crew. There is a rep on site today if we have any more questions that I for some reason can't answer, but what that's going to do is that's going to upgrade the cameras in this room, it's going to upgrade the microphones, it's also going to, instead of you guys squinting at that TV back there, it's going to put two displays right here, no higher than the first row, so you guys can see them, but they're not obstructing people to see you, allowing you to see presentations and things along those lines. It's also going to clean up our audio quality inside this room alone, and obviously all of you are here, so you never really watch the meetings online, if you do have the opportunity, if you ever hear that static, we're going to get rid of that static. And then your microphone's on your desk, every other one is actually going to have a microphone speaker, we're looking at the audios to be built into those speakers, so you guys can have a better quality for yourselves up front, so that you don't have to try and stare and say, will you repeat that a bunch?
So we can actually hear each other?
It's a goal.
I don't know what to do with that.
It's a goal. With that, like I said, is, it is the fifty-four mount, ten thousand of that is built in, because the way this system works is it's actually through you guys, runs through the stage to the back corner, and then is cord all the way upstairs to that closet, which runs to our main system. This equipment is six and a half, seven years old, we put a ten, ten thousand dollar buffer in there, if we're pulling something, it snaps, if we disconnect an old terminal and it's bad, I don't want to have to come back to you guys and say, hey, we can't. Livestream meetings this month, because we're missing parts, I want to be able to buy them right on the spot, so.
What will happen with this old equipment, and does it have any salvage value?
So this old equipment, the hardware itself is good hardware. This company is going to come in, the cameras, not salvage value, we're going to replace those, but everything else is, we're going to upgrade the firmware inside of them, we're going to upgrade the software inside of them, we're going to kind of replace some of the guts. So as far as getting, like, just gutting it, we're not doing that, we're actually keeping it. The microphones and pegs and things like that, replaceable, reusable, we can reuse a lot of this stuff on the new system, so. That's why if you look at some of the quotes, this one's significantly less than some of the other ones, that's to avoid the whole, let's gut it process.
Thank you for explaining that, because I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Are there any further questions? Unless I'm mistaken, since there's a prepayment amount of half, that required its own vote?
That's correct.
So just to clarify, that prepayment amount is the equipment itself, it is nothing else other than the equipment, so.
Mr. President, I think that Mr. Russell is wanting to speak on this.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Kevin.
I was the one that was instrumental in purchasing this building, by the way, over the objection of several other council members, and I'm proud of, that's one of the things I'm very proud of. It really did put this town on the map. Saying that, the acoustics in this room have been terrible from day one, put some tapestries up. But in any case, I'm going to get into that contract and why I think, why I wanted to mention some. As most people know who know me, I'm hearing impaired, I'm a disabled vet, it happened in the service, there's nothing I can do to change that. I've had people actually wave their arms in front of me and say, well, you must know sign language, while I was on a council, so, you know, it kind of was a little bit of an insult, honestly. I joke about it. I saw nothing in this contract where you were going to be ADA compliant, and you have to be ADA compliant for hearing impaired people, it is a requirement, it's part of the ADA rules, and you have meetings that are big enough that they have to be. Now, I agree, this needs to be, the, the P I A V needs to be fixed, but you really need to address the ADA when you go in and with the contractors on that. And I saw nothing in the contracts that said anything about that. There's several things you can do, like I said, tapestries might help some of the reverberation, make it easier. You can get now, with the technology today, where you're putting on all these screens, you can actually have a real-time closed captioning that can be added to those screens, which would help people. And that certainly helped me, I try to use this, it's not perfect, and when it goes bad, you, you could sit there and laugh, I could cheer you, this is Google Translate, it actually is an app on your phone, that acts sort of like a closed caption, but it's not perfect. But I urge you to go back and take a look at this. When I looked, and, and as an example, yes, it does need to be fixed. When I tried to watch a council meeting the other day, the volume was so low online that even at maximum volume, I could not hear what people were saying. So it is obviously a separate switch and stuff for that, please address that as well, but please look at this contract and try to make sure that you're ADA compliant when you do award it. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. I am aware and sensitive to people that are hearing impaired and could have issues, and heck, one day I might, because I really like to go to the, to the gun range, so I might be right there with them, but Michael, if you don't mind, would you please spend some time in the next forty-five days researching additional possible ADA compliances that could be added in?
I can, and I can speak to the fact, our hearing devices that we currently already have on hand, that you can put headset in, plug it in, you can hear the auto around the spot, will stay, we will keep that in place, and then I will look into other compliances to make sure that we hit as many as we can.
Thank you, and by all means, if, if you'd like to reach out to Mr. Russell and ask for any opinions on that, I'm sure he'd welcome that.
Can do.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding this item?
So is there any difference in equipment, if this goes with any kind of ADA coverage? I mean, I don't, we need the equipment to improve things, period, for ADA people, whatever their disability may be. I have no issue with talking about going forwards with this, if the equipment's going to be the same and we're just plugging things on.
So as far as typical IT goes, and I can't, and I won't say with all certainty, but as, as far as typical IT goes, is there's a plugin for essentially, just like the Google app he's using right now on the spot. There's plugins for almost all softwares. I'm assuming you just, yeah, I'm getting a head shake, yeah, there's a good chance we got...
You're welcome to come up if you want to address it.
We, we, we got plugins, there's a plugin for everything, and then on top of that, like I said, we also do Zoom all of our meetings, I know there's Zoom plugins as well, if you guys have been in Zoom meeting where they have the transcripts and stuff, so that, I'm most bothered there's a solution, it's just like I said, it's a matter of looking into what it is.
You don't want to approve something knowing it's going to be obsolete if we do any upgrades.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for the whole thing here, if it just has extra pieces that plug on, and that's how these things work, if we were making a commitment to a certain equipment, that then we'd actually need a different equipment, then that's a different story.
No, so like I said, the, what we're doing is we're doing software upgrades, is essentially the, the bulk of this, is we are, we are implementing new software that'll allow us to do those things. Right now, if you were to tell me that, you know, we're going to deny this, and I need plugins for this equipment, I could tell you right now, it won't happen. I mean, there's no, there's no way to find plugins for the software we have now. It's a matter of, we need to upgrade first and then do the plugins we need. There you go, we will be able to add captions to that.
That's good.
Yes.
I like it.
Are there further questions?
When do you hope to, if we approve this now, when do you have, hope to have it up and running?
So that is going to be, like I said, approval, we do that down payment, they order equipment, equipment turnaround. I'd say, I think the last I heard was equipment turnaround was two weeks, and then we play the get it between meetings games. Like I said, scatter six over the thing, and it's going to be one of those, like, hey, we're going to know the day after council, let's start, and let's hope we don't have an emergency meeting come up, and let's get it done in the two and a half week timeframe before the next meeting starts, so. We do...
End of March-ish.
Yes, and we do have, we do already have proposed backups in place as far as, I've already talked with our PR department, if we need to shoot it with a camera and then post the livestream the next day in order to make something happen, we can, so.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion first for the entirety of the purchase, then we'll have to approve the down payments, or should we do that the other way around?
Down payment should be first.
Down payment should be first, all right. Do you want to have a motion for the prepayment amount of twenty-seven thousand one eighty-eight eighty-one?
Mr. President, I will make a motion to approve expenditure down, a prepayment amount of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars eighty-one cents for the audiovisual equipment for town hall.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for the prepayment of item I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Prepayment is approved, therefore do I have a motion for the entire amount?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed fifty-four three seventy-seven sixty-two for the audiovisual equipment of town hall.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carries five zero.
Thank you, sir.
Item J, consider expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed fifty thousand for professional community and economic development services between Whitestown, Indiana, and Boone County Economic Development Corporation, hello.
Good evening, councilors, I'm Jessica Schwartz, I am your VP of Economic Development with the Boone EDC. Also present with me in the crowd this evening is one of our board members, Corey Coats. I am here this evening to do a recap for you of twenty twenty-four, both in the document that is in front of you, that's specific to you, this is your return on your investment for twenty twenty-four. And then also a PowerPoint, if you'd like to have some ready material and dive deeper, we can also have coffee or conversations if you'd like to chat through any specifics. But I will keep it short this evening, the return on the investment, it's obviously double-sided, pointing through thirty-four percent of the leads that we submitted in twenty twenty-four went directly towards Whitestown, a couple of deals that came out of it, Safafaya had their expansion, created new jobs, Scooters Coffee's distribution center here in town, and then Telemans' expansion and creating their new jobs as well. So, let's see, there is a breakdown on your one-pager, not the presentation, and it shows the leads by segment of industry, in case you're curious of a breakdown of who's interested in coming to Whitestown specifically, we provided that data for you. And then on the backside, high level, these are some partnership efforts, so on a monthly basis, Katie Barr, town manager, and her team, and myself, and the future new CEO of the EDC, take the team to lunch, have conversations around the happenings, the futures, the challenges, et cetera. We participated in your YMCA feasibility study, Dom and I had talked through the Indiana Arts Commission grant, and to be clear on this, there was a typo, and truly, I can own this in my communications with Jennifer, she had thought that we had submitted for that Indiana Arts grant, and we, I don't think we did, did we? I don't think so. Okay. So my apologies for the typo there, I own that in my communications with Jennifer. However, we've also had some events as well, so quarterly meetings with Boone County elected officials as an opportunity to give EDC updates, and also give the elected officials an opportunity to chat amongst each other for others in the county that you may not see on a regular basis, and give that safe, safe space to have those conversations. Twenty twenty-five State of the Community Breakfast, if you see any sleepy eyes this evening, crowd, there were some of us that were there at six-thirty this morning, and we'll do it again here even next year, we've done it for several years now. We finished the twenty twenty-four childcare study from seed money and a grant, and we, as of this last week, have created a coalition from that. The coalition leader is Michelle Height-Thomas, from our steering committee, and her background is in state advocacy for childcare, so they will be eventually creating their own 501(c)(3), but we can look forward to finally having a local advocate that can work alongside us, the community foundation, really other employers, and begin to push that needle forward, and also looking at it from a workforce issue that needs to be addressed. We did the twenty twenty-four Wage and Benefits Study, which was intended to be a tool for employers who are looking to attract talent to their company, and then also to be able to set the standard for that almost twenty-three dollar an hour living wage for Boone County, for businesses looking to come to the county, and setting that as a standard. We hosted the annual investor lunch in, back in November, we'll do it again in twenty twenty-five, and then we were also thankful to have the Whitestown team alongside us in the twenty twenty-four best day in Boone, and let's see, what else? Housing Study Utility Analysis, we had created that to give all of us a benchmark rather than making gut decisions, being able to make decisions that are, that are data-informed, so we understand what, how many units of housing do we need by twenty thirty, are we matching this as we grow, et cetera. And then, of course, we've continued with our ongoing meetings and communications, I do something called BR&amp;E's, Business Retention and Expansion Visits, and so these are meetings with your businesses here in Whitestown to say, how are things going, making sure that they're happy in the community, and of course, if there's anything, we're happy to act on their behalf and bring that forward to you as well. A few other things. Few other things, uh, so you can see the BR&amp;E visits in the green box, uh, I conducted twelve out of the just north of seventy, all around the county, so twelve of those were dedicated to Whitestown. We have a microloan program that Whitestown initially put seed money towards as well as other municipalities. Millers, the family that owns the fundays here in town, they were once an original microloan to be able to open fundays. They paid that off and then turned around and came to us, used another microloan, and they turned sub-sixteen into sub-days, and we just celebrated a ribbon cutting with them. And then, of course, some of you are familiar with the one-eighty and makeover, which was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand to Hattie's Coffee House, um, spells out the things we did for that project. And then an additional hundred and thirty-six thousand of a grant for our LA Cafe, which improved the interior of their restaurant, including restrooms and cold storage. We can look forward to one-eighty in color, we have selected the artist that will be completing the shade structure, and, um, have our initial conversation scheduled here coming up, and we'll be working with them to create that new shade structure in Jackson Run Park. So, all that to say, this is your return on investment, thank you for a wonderful twenty-twenty-four, thank you for trusting us to be your economic development arm, and to work with your businesses and work with you, so, thank you. Any questions for me?
We've always had very good return on investment for the amount of money that we invest, we always end up with many multiples more coming in each year.
Thank you, sir.
So we appreciate that effort and, and the return we get.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say I appreciate your responsive, responsiveness, not just to members of the council or town staff, but also to members of the community when they have questions, even if it's questions that aren't necessarily, uh, in your bailiwick, you will still find them answers, you'll help them, even if you're not getting anything out of it personally, because you like to see the businesses thrive and grow, and I do appreciate, acknowledge that.
A hundred percent, I grew up in a small business family, so it's, it's even personal to me.
And I can tell you that I really liked the behind the scenes, so I did the behind the scenes with Amazon and the IWIS.
Oh, good.
And for anybody on the council, it's, it's a great way to interact with our local businesses behind the scene and actually learn the whole ins and outs.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, I didn't touch on that even though it was on the document, so Behind the Scenes is a tour information out, and, um, usually starts at eight AM, we are done by nine, uh, and we have handpicked, um, a good range and a good blend of employers out of the twelve months minus, I think we don't do December, and I think we don't do, like, what would be spring break for schools. Um, but otherwise, it gives you a chance to see behind the curtains of our local businesses and how things run, and, um, small business owners even come to the small business tours because it's a way of saying, what are you doing that? That's working, um, and learning from each other without stepping on the chamber's toes and finding ways to add value to our local businesses.
With that being said, council, is there any other questions regarding item J? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed fifty thousand for professional community and economic development services between Whitestown, Indiana and Boone County Economic Development Corporation. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five zero, which brings us now to item K. Consider expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed fifty thousand for professional community and economic development services between Whitestown, Indiana Utilities and Boone County Economic Development Corporation. This is the split.
Right, this is the split, so on behalf of Whitestown, at some point or another, you, the council had wished to split the hundred thousand into two different budgets, so we continue to honor that until you say otherwise, so this is the other half of that, but just budgeted into a separate bucket.
I'm going to assume there's no questions about this particular item now, so if anyone would like to make a motion.
I will, uh, make this one too, I will make a motion to approve the expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed fifty thousand for the professional community and economic development services between Whitestown, Indiana Utilities and Boone County Economic Development Corporation.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you so much. Item L, consider approval of resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two dedicating certain property as right-of-way.
Thank you, I can, I can take it straight, like we talked about, um, for the record, Ashley Albrecht, um, Town Attorney, uh, this resolution pertains to a parcel of property that is involved with the Peters Street and Hull Street, um, reconstruction project, and I apologize, um, my voice is not one hundred percent tonight, but we did a resolution because this specific parcel, um, the town now owns, but we realized that there was no right-of-way ever established with it. So, just because we own it doesn't mean it's right-of-way, and if we want to build a road through it, we need to establish the right-of-way. So that's what this document does, um, the different exhibits, exhibit A is the, um, legal description, exhibit B is the, um, the, the parcel plot, and then, just so you know what you're agreeing to, um, as it is your land, exhibit C is the dedication and deed of the public right-of-way, so that has to be, um, approved all in one with the resolution, so um, you are establishing the right-of-way and dedicating it to, um, the town.
Thank you very much. While this information is pretty thorough, are there any questions regarding this resolution? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make the motion, we approve resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two dedicating certain property as right-of-way.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five oh. Item M, consider approval of out-of-state travel to attend Fire Command Officer Boot Camp. Chief?
And every council, this is, uh, a out-of-state travel request for Command Officer Boot Camp for one of our lieutenants, um, to go learn about leadership tactics and, uh, relationships in the fire service. Um, it's a not to exceed amount of two thousand.
And just to be clear, just because there's no names, this is for one firefighter?
Yeah, one firefighter, Lieutenant Zach Slater.
Again, uh, the cost as well, the spending priorities is for the out-of-state authorization. Are there any questions? Eric, this was recommended by the Fire Board.
It was indeed, and as such, I'll go ahead with the motion then, to approve the out-of-state travel for the Fire Command Officer Boot Camp. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries five zero. Chief, consider, uh, item N, consider expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed eighty thousand for fire gear.
All right, so typically, if you're, um, as we purchase fire gear out of our, uh, PPE line item within the budget, it's kind of one-off here and there. This is a culmination of putting together, uh, purchasing for new fire gear for our seven new personnel, and also replacement gear for our rotation of expiring gear, um, within our current personnel. Um, this is a, um, this is a special purchase request, um, for significant savings, um, specifically the fact that, uh, the amount we're requesting is not to exceed eighty thousand, and the list price for this gear, um, coat, pants, boots, helmets, gloves, things like that, um, the list price for that is a hundred and seventy-four thousand six seventy-three, um, for essentially about a ninety-nine thousand dollar savings, um, if we were to be purchasing at list price, so grouping all this together gives us a significant savings, and we'd like to be able to purchase it that way.
Discounts are good.
It also has a favorable recommendation from the Fire Board.
And I would just add, this item and the next item, as was discussed at the Fire Board, there is significant savings due to some opening that the state allowed us on their, their bid products, so I would just express appreciation to them for opening that to communities, because it's saving us a ton of money on both.
Something that we have to have.
One of the items we're gonna have to have anyway.
You can't send firefighters in in shorts and flip-flops, it doesn't work.
Not more than once.
No, it's bad.
That being said, are there any questions regarding this item? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed eighty thousand for the fire gear.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Carries five zero, and then, as Eric indicated, item O, consider expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed four hundred nineteen thousand three hundred nine for SCBA.
Okay, so this is a special purchase request, just as the, the one prior to it, but this is for replacement of our entire SCBA equipment that is aging. Essentially, um, we can no longer do some aspects with neighboring departments because of our outdated equipment, um, the fact that, uh, they're spending more time in maintenance than not, they're starting to develop leaks, so on and so forth, it's time to replace, make sure we're updated with the newest NFPA standards, um, and we also found the ability to use source well, uh, cooperative bids, um, through the vendor MES, um, that allows us to get the equipment we need at this price, uh, the list price for this, um, would be six hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and eleven, um, giving us a two hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred dollar savings-ish, um, to be able to purchase this as well. Um, the quote also includes a trade-in value of thirty-five thousand for our existing equipment, um, and this would bring us up to speed. And I want to give a special thank you to, um, Town Manager Katie Barr and Assistant Town Manager, uh, Cornet, um, for assisting us and allowing us, uh, the opportunity to utilize town, uh, capital funds to purchase this.
Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Yes.
And they're off.
I'll make the motion, um, for approval of expenditure exceeding twenty-five thousand not to exceed four hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and nine for the SCBA.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries five zero, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Item P, consider adoption of resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three acknowledging the Clerk Treasurer's authority to counsel town, cancel town warrants and outstanding unpaid checks. Mr. Clerk Treasurer.
This is, uh, part of Indiana Code, it's a requirement that we bring this up every ye- year for checks at this point that, uh, would be in twenty-twenty-two, previously this last year would have been twenty-twenty-one. Uh, these are any checks that are outstanding, uh, that have not cleared through the bank, that were issued in twenty-twenty-two. It's just required to be brought up in council meetings per state code.
Thank you, Mr. Sumner, is there any questions or concerns regarding this item?
Um, I have a question, have, have new checks been issued to replace these?
I didn't look through the list to check to see if every single one of those had had a new check to replace it, I honestly don't know.
Okay.
We issue a lot of checks, so.
Yeah.
I haven't looked through the list yet.
Okay, because that may be something we want to start doing, um, because there's a lot of people on this list, like HWC has one on here for almost ten grand. I mean, some of these, you know, some of these are employees, um, I know one that has not gotten his check that is on this list. Um, so I just, maybe that's something we need to start maybe keeping track of, is if it's been reissued.
I do have a question on that point, if you, if I could jump in too, uh, because it's my understanding that even though the checks are voided, that the money is still earmarked and held for those recipients, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay.
So maybe if you can try, um, in a realistic time, Perry, I'm not gonna hound you, maybe try to figure out how many of these checks have been reissued, and maybe get us a list of what hasn't. Um, because like, there's some people on here that I may know, there's like a Pearson Ford, you know, that maybe we can help try to clear up this old money and get it off of our books completely. Would be great, thank you.
Thank you, I can do that.
All that being said, is there any further disclosure to questions? Regarding this item?
Yeah, one of them's mine, and, um, I tried to catch a check, bank said it was too old. The date, whatever. It's, uh, the date on the checks was still good, but the bank said it wasn't, so.
We can reissue the che, the check to you.
That'd work, it's not much.
Not a problem.
Five thousand dollars, I wish, but.
Sure, it's not a problem at all.
All right, I assume that anybody else that finds themselves on this list can reach out to you directly and request a reissue of the check?
Absolutely.
All right.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to consider adoption, or actually, um, correction, I make a motion to approve adoption of resolution twenty-twenty-five zero-three acknowledging the Clerk Treasurer's authority to cancel town warrants and outstanding unpaid checks.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five zero. Item Q, acknowledgement and acceptance by the Town Council of a Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Form for Counselor Cheryl Hancock.
Yeah, I'll just kind of give you a little backstory, just trying to be up and honest, um, I personally will not benefit from this transaction, um, the town is buying a small section from the church in which I attend, um, so I did not take any part in any of the negotiations or any of that, just wanting to be upfront and honest and out there letting people know that the transaction is happening at some point.
Are there any questions from council regarding this item? This is simple acknowledgement, so your form has been acknowledged and accepted, thank you, Cheryl. Item R, acknowledgement and acceptance of, by the Town Council of Uniform Con, uh, Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Form for Counselor Dan Patterson. Before we get to this item, Mr. Kingsill, you want to discuss this one?
Good evening again, Ken Kingsill, six-five-one-five East, County Route seven fifty South, I'm just curious on the timing of this, um, why now, and why did we not have, uh, this, uh, document filed last year when, uh, you sold up, almost half a million dollars worth of trucks to town?
I'm happy to address that, because I was asked. This year, I, I saw that, uh, Courtney had done one in January, and I knew that Cheryl had one on here, and just like with last year, I had said that if anyone had wanted to see one, whether I was making any profit or not, I would have happily submitted one, no one asked within the timeframe where submission would have been practical, or, excuse me, possible, so no, one was not submitted. This year, people asked, I'm submitting one, there is no RFP currently in the works that I am aware of for vehicles, I'm submitting one just to cover myself and say for the year that, yep, I work at Pearson Ford and I sell fleet and commercial vehicles.
Seems to me the Conflict of Interest Form is not something that is to be filed upon request, isn't that something that's required by state law?
No.
Do I misunderstand that?
You're misunderstanding what I'm telling you, and that is that this is for the annual, just to simply indicate where I work and what my job function is. If there was an actual purchase being made, or if there was a, uh, RFQ or RFP that I was involved in, I would submit another on that particular item as well, this is just an acknowledgement of where I work and what I do.
So why did you not submit one last year? Because no one asked for it?
We've not, we've gone over this, and we've gone over this in council. One was not supported last year because there was no, uh, pecuniary gain, no pecuniary interest in that transaction, and no one asked me to do one regardless, but, but with no pecuniary gain, it wasn't required.
I just find it very difficult to believe that in a, in a sales commission situation, that, uh, the, the manager, which I believe you're in a management position, and so you weren't exactly the person that, that sold the vehicles, but still.
I was.
You were, and you got no commission whatsoever.
I want to tell you a few things, uh, my department, my fleet and commercial department is an apartment of exactly one person, and that's me. So, I do manage it, and I also do all the sales for that department, uh, there are multiple people in this room that have bought vehicles from me, and they know this to be true. And I made absolutely zero money on that deal.
And I made absolutely zero money on that deal. It was documented. It was proven.
And do you not think that that raises an appearance of impropriety at all? You think that it is totally appropriate for the Town Council President to sell vehicles to the town even when apparently you don't get any pecuniary interest? But it seems to me that you got some attaboys.
Nope.
No attaboys at all.
Have you ever worked at a cardio shop?
No, I have not.
Okay. At the end of the month, everybody resets to zero and they really don't care what you did the previous month. Okay? And the reason I made a sale to the town of Whitestown purely was to save my town money. And I saved the town over $70,000 on that purchase compared to the next responsive bid. I'm proud of that savings for the town. Everybody on this council, when they voted, excuse me, Mr. Smock was not on council that time, but when they voted on it, and I did recuse myself, was aware of where I work. I did not speak on that subject. I was here purely as a vendor for that item and saved the town over $70,000. I'm not upset that I did that. I'm glad to have done it. And there was zero gain by me for that purchase.
But do you acknowledge why there may be some bad taste in the mouths of residents when they see this?
I can see why people might have questions, which I'm happy to answer, which is what I'm doing for you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Come on up, Kevin.
As I understand it, both these conflict of interest, both yours and Cheryl, are actually just letting people, it might be some potential in the future of some kind of conflict. And the attorney can correct me. Unless there's an actual conflict, you didn't even have to file it. Am I wrong?
That is correct, because there was no pecuniary interest.
So, for somebody to make all sorts of hay over this, to me, is ridiculous. I'm sorry. That's all I got to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Would anyone else like to talk to me about this one? No?
I don't believe the previous discussion by Mr. Kingsill is relevant for this agenda item because it was last year.
Mr. Vice President, since this is my item, would you like to accept or acknowledge my conflict of interest?
I acknowledge and accept.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. That leads us to item number nine, Other Business. Does anyone have any other business they want to bring before this council?
Mr. President, if I may?
You may.
There's an issue that has been buried in my heart and I feel like I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge it tonight. I'm sorry if I get emotional about this. About three weeks ago, there was an accident in DC, Washington DC, that really impacted my profession as a pilot. And it was very close to my heart because that specific approach that that American Airlines, American Eagle flight flew, I have flown that specific approach several times, flying north to land on runway one and then breaking it off to the right and then coming into land on runway 33, which is a shorter runway. I was on an airplane when that happened and as soon as I landed, my phone was blowing up because everybody knows what I do and they were wondering if I was okay. And I saw the video of that and it really shook me because of what I do. So, really what I wanted to say tonight was, there are two crew members that still have not, that are going to be having their funeral service this weekend. Two other crew members have already been buried. And I just wanted to say their names for the record for the crew of that PSA airplane as well as the Army Blackhawk. So, PSA Flight Captain Jonathan Campos, First Officer Sam Lilly, Flight Attendant Ian Epstein, and Flight Attendant Dinesha Elder. And on the Army Blackhawk, Staff Sergeant Ryan O'Hara, Chief War and Office Officer Andrew Eves, and Captain Rebecca Loback. And if you would just indulge me and just give a moment of silence, just one minute Thank you all so much. And whenever you all get on an airplane, just keep in mind that all of us that are in front take you from A to B. We are dedicated to get everybody where they need to be. Thank you.
And what Counselor Thomas said reminds me that life is often unpredictable in short. So, make sure to try to treat each day as a gift and love and respect those around you as much as possible. That being said, if there's no other business before this body, I would take a motion for a German.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of Germans, say aye.